Great, like call on North Aurora Community the whole meeting for Monday, number 18, 2024. Roll call, please.
Mayor Graffino.
Here.
Trustee Christensen.
Here.
Trustee Curtis.
Here.
Trustee Gately.
Here.
Trustee Lowery.
Here.
Trustee Nedred.
Here.
Trustee Salazar.
Here.
Thank you. Audience comments? Trustee comments? And a winner discussion, Steve?
Thank you, Mayor. Item number one is our annual review of upcoming meeting schedules. By state law, we have to publish our meeting schedules for the public. So for 2025, that would be our regularly scheduled meetings. That's our village board, our committee of the whole, plan commission, and our two standing committees, which would be beautification and North Aurora Days. In front of you tonight, you have a schedule that, just like in previous years, we didn't have a lot of holidays interfere with our village board. Labor Day every year, because it's always the first Monday of September. Right now, that is the only day that is affected for the village board and committee of the whole. Plan Commission did not have a holiday, a day following a holiday, so they have their full 12 allotment. And as far as committees, we have their schedule. The beautification only meets every three months, and North Aurora Days meets every month. Though time from time, they might cancel it due to a lack of agenda. So with that, I'm just asking that these days, they're the standard days that we've been currently having for North Aurora Days, the second Monday of the month at 6:00 P. M. Beautification is third Monday of the month at 5:00 P. M. And then, of course, village board and committee of the whole are 7:00, first and third Mondays. Plan Commission's Tuesdays, first Tuesday.
Looks good, really? Yep, thank you. All right, item two?
Okay, item number two in the, I'm not, the PowerPoint up real quick. Metronet. Hey. Okay. Item number two in front of you tonight is regarding Metronet cable franchise agreement. Board knows that we have three cable providers, and when I say cable, it's, it's what you would know as typical TV where you have several channels, not streaming per se. So in this case, Metronet, Comcast, AT&amp;T all provide some form of TV service in our community. By state law, they have the right to do it either through a local franchise or through a state approval through the ICC, the Illinois Commerce Commission. In the case of Metronet, just like Comcast, they have a local agreement. Local agreements are nice because essentially it allows the village to work with them hand in hand, and ultimately those cable companies will build out the majority, if not the whole, community. AT&amp;T's franchise agreement is through the state, which allows them to pick neighborhoods of where they want to be as opposed to building out. So that's just kind of a background where we're at. Metronet came to the village about seven years ago in April of 2017, and they signed a 10-year agreement. This is, like I said earlier, it's standard to have these agreements because essentially you're allowing a company to put a ton of infrastructure in our right of ways, taking up future space for improvements we want to do at some point. So with that, you're allowed to charge a franchise fee, whether they go through the state or the village, either case, it's 5%. So 5% of all gross sales of cable services come back to the municipality. In the case of Metronet, their term goes through 2024, and you're getting close to the time that we would talk about renewals, usually about a year out. But instead, they informed not only us, but my knowledge, all of the Fox Valley communities that have Metronet service, so that would be all the way from South Elgin, all the way down to Yorkville in that area. So a lot of us communities have Metronet now, and they've informed us that they are no longer looking to provide cable service. Streaming, they said, is taking a huge market. It's hard to make money on providing channel cable anymore. So they're looking to terminate their local franchise agreement with each of these municipalities. So in our case, we're bringing it before the board, just to give you an update on where we're at. So once again, I already mentioned the 5%. So Metronet, they no longer want to provide cable, but they will continue to provide internet and phone. So all of their stuff is still on the ground. All of their services are provided by the same cable, the same fiber optic cable, so they're just gonna not sell TV product anymore, but they're gonna keep their internet and phone. Metronet, like I said earlier, looking to terminate early. They'd like to terminate in December. So right now, as a settlement to appease villages of of trying to, I don't know if you would call it just goodwill, say, hey, you know what? We're getting out of our contract early. We're willing to give you a one-time lump sum to end it two and a half years early. So they're looking to offer us $7,800 approximately. To put that in perspective, last year, we received $6,800 total in revenues from Metronet for cable services. And as Jason will tell you, that's going down because as streaming is coming on, you're starting to see those cable franchise fees dip. So there really isn't a very good termination language in these franchise agreements. I'm gonna let Kevin expound on that later. But basically, they're looking to just terminate it and do a one-time lump sum payment. We have been in several conversations with other administrators in the Fox Valley area. Kevin's been in conversations with several attorneys in the area, trying to figure out exactly what a village legally can do to continue to basically allow a company to stay in the right of way and utilize all that space without having the franchise fee. So unfortunately, state law already kind of preempts us on a few things. So Metronet already provides some form of telecommunications fee to the village through our simplified telecommunications tax. So we do get a proportional amount of that telecom tax from Metronet Services in Illinois. The federal law prohibits us from basically charging right-of-way fee for internet services in an effort to expand on broadband throughout the country. So where we're really, cable was the one thing that the Cable Act allowed villages to really hone in on. So what we're doing right now is, there is an ability to consider a reasonable fee for right-of-way access. But there isn't really a good definition for a reasonable fee, to put it short. So where we're at right now is Metronet is looking to terminate. We don't really have anything that says they can't terminate, but X Kevin will probably say in a second, doesn't mean we have to accept their termination. But if they stop selling TV services, we're just gonna get zero money in the long run. So that's the stance that every village I've talked to is into. So with that, I'm gonna leave it to Kevin to kind of go to what our options are right now, which, like I said, aren't many.
So there is a process that's established in the Federal Cable Act for termination of a franchise, and a franchisee can terminate for certain changes in market conditions. So we don't have to agree to the agreement to that they've tendered to us. We could simply say no. They'll probably stop providing cable services, like they said. And it'll go through an administrative process with the state. We'd probably spend money to to go through that process, and they probably will get to terminate. And we may not get a fee out of it. So it probably makes sense to accept what they're offering to us. It's a little less clear how we go forward from here. As Steve said, the telecommunications services that they plan to continue to provide with the, through the facilities they have in our right-of-way will generate some simplified telecommunications tax that the state collects, and we get a portion of that. The internet services that they plan to provide, like Steve said, are under federal law and were preempted from collecting any fees on internet. And then there's kind of a there's, there's some nebulous services. I call it nebulous because I don't, I'm not a technical person, but for data and for network, arguably, we have some authority to collect fees for people, you know, offering private for-profit services through our right-of-ways. But, you know, we're kind of getting out into technology that the law hasn't caught up with yet. So one thing that staff has suggested, and we've actually turned around and made the pitch to them, is for them to provide in-kind services to us kind of as compensation for these other services that we're not quite sure how to measure in terms of what we might collect from them in our right-of-way. And also, you know, some uncertainty as to exactly what that authority is that we have to collect from them because there aren't any statutory provisions that relate to it. That's, that's where we're at right now.
I, I need to ask, what do you mean by the right-of-way? It's not on the streets, you know?
The right-of-way is typically the piece of land the village owns. When we say right-of-way, it's, it's the village's own property in front of people's homes, businesses. So typically, also known as the parkway. It's typically the piece of land between the sidewalk and the curb if you have a sidewalk.
So it's not an electronic right-of-way? It's okay.
Good, thanks. But as Kevin said, and I don't want to allude too much into it because we still have to talk to Metronet, but I mean, we are going to go back to them with a, with a thought and try to work this out with them. But ultimately, given the time crunch and everything, we just wanted to make it aware that regardless of that outcome, they're going to look to terminate in December. So it's likely gonna be on the next board agenda.
Makes sense to take the money, right? So I mean, that's what, that's what makes sense. Something is better than nothing.
Can't we go back and say we want what we would have been paid through the two and a half years? Like, why only take half? Why not say, well, it's two and a half years till it expires. We want the full two and a half years, what we would have received.
Sure. Yeah, and we've kind of alluded to that too, but once again, they don't have to do anything. They could just stop providing TV services, and then we would get zero. So
What they pay us is based on their, their usage. So there's no getting, it's no getting, they're, in the packet, it said that each year, their, their subscribership is going down and down and down. That's why the money is, is going down, that we're getting every month, every month. So there's no way to, every year rather. There's no way to determine what we would have get. If they stop giving it, they cut off the service, there's no income, we get nothing.
Right. So, sorry. But yeah, so in theory, if they just stop providing the service and they tell all their customers, as of this date, there will be no more TV service, the bills will go down to zero, and then we wouldn't get any.
They have an independent right to be in the right-of-way to provide telecommunications and internet, so you know, it's not like we could tell them that they have to get out of the right-of-way, and their stuff's already in the right-of-way.
So, so their, their their utilities are in the right-of-way. They're going to be using it for internet and the other. It's already there. They're just gonna stop transmitting the cable, television. Okay.
And I should have said earlier that any termination, the draft termination agreement that was in the packet and everything, the termination agreement that we would have with Metronet, it does include that we would have language added to it that says that they have to adhere to all right-of-way, you know, standards going forward, although in truth be told, they're required by ordinance to follow that anyways. But we would still tighten it up and make sure they know that they have to adhere to our right-of-way standards. I think the big issue for the staff was simple. Usually you don't have a massive telecom company coming in and building out 90% or more of your town and leaving all of that infrastructure in the benefit to the residents, is obviously they still have another option for internet and phone. The downside to the village is if another cable provider comes up and they want to provide TV services through digital, that's space that's already occupied. And so they could go the same route and then decide not to sell TV, and then all of a sudden, you just have a bunch of infrastructure in your ground, limiting, you know, what you can put in there in the future.
Do they let their customers know, though? Do the?
I don't know. I don't know if they
I mean, that's one important thing too, because their residents will be like, what? They just shut it off, so.
Yeah, I think they have a plan for that.
All right, anything else?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just kind of curious. What's, what's Metronet's benefit for offering this? Like, if, if, if they're gonna stop providing service and give us nothing moving forward, why are they wanting to do this? I'm just kind of curious.
Well, because if, if we, if we refuse to agree, they'd have to go through the process with the state. It's gonna cost them time and money and delay.
Terminate. Why don't they just let it run out? Because I guess
Well, they could.
You know?
I, I think the answer probably is a financial one for them, that they're losing customers.
I guess, and it's maintenance and upkeep of that system if people's cable goes out or something like that. Not everybody has internet or phone through them, so they might just have cable through them.
A lot of people have just gone to internet.
No, no, I'm saying that what's their benefit of wanting to settle, like, settle with us and cancel this agreement if if they're gonna there's not gonna be cable anymore, they're not gonna be giving us any money anyway, why do they want to terminate this little agreement with us?
Well, because they, they have an agreement, a 10-year agreement to provide cable fees to us, and you know, we, you know, they would be in breach if, if we didn't agree, and they, they stopped providing services, and they would be in breach of this franchise agreement. Theoretically, we could sue them for the damages that we think we would have had if they had continued to provide the services. So they're looking for some certainty, and, you know, they're willing to settle on, on an amount.
The irony would be is they would stop selling service during that lawsuit, but also paying the bills for it.
Right.
Yep.
Probably licensing expensive stuff.
Sure.
We had a, we, this was one of those issues where it was nice to see the Fox Valley come together. Like I said, several administrators got together and talked, went through all those questions, tried to figure out different angles, and then Kevin and a group of other attorneys did their research as well.
All right, thanks. Item three, Convention Bureau.
Hey. Tonight in front of you is a draft for a new agreement with the Aurora Area Convention and Visitors Bureau. Correllson, the executive director, is in the audience, in case you have questions later. This is an interesting new way of doing things, so we're gonna kind of walk through it. So a little bit of background. The IGA, the Internet Governmental Agreement, dates back, we've been using the Aurora Area Convention and Visitors Bureau since 1987. Typically, it's been five-year agreements. And the last one has actually been expired. It expired two years ago during COVID, and we've just been honoring those terms. But we've had this ongoing relationship with them, and I'm gonna get into that in a second, but I think it's important to mention who's in it first because that's part of the story. So the multiple municipalities in there, you see the list. It's actually grown. They recently just added Auburn and Geneva. And so if you look at, you know, Aurora, Batavia, Big Rock, Auburn, Geneva, Hinckley, Montgomery, North Aurora, Oswego, Plano, Sugar Grove, Yorkville. Why is that important? It's important because the more people you have in a convention bureau, the more you're basically leveraging economies of scale. So I get to that in a second. So right now, in the past, under the IGA, we had these five-year agreements, and every five years, every town would have to sign on that, you know, that they were part of this agreement going forward. It took nine signatures, 10 signatures, I don't know how many members there was. Now, what we're doing with them is everyone's kind of individualizing, meaning you can work with them a little bit on, on things that remain to your community, so to speak. So a little bit about the funding. I'll look at the laptop screen before I put it up there. So the village pays 90% of our 3% hotel motel tax. For those who are interested, that the hotel motel tax is a occupation tax that the village can levy, basically, on any overnight stay in our community. By state law, we can go up to 5%. Ours is 3%. And the village pays 90% of that 3%. This is the standard amount of money that every other town pays, with the exception, I think, of Aurora because of their size. They have so many hotels that their contribution to the group is exponentially larger. So they have a cap of how much they provide to the group each year. So of that 90% of the 3%, that equates to $94,000 this past fiscal year that we provided to the group. For reference, that could go down, as we, we recently talked about my place potentially closing, so I just want to put that out there. Village can, we can raise it to 5%, as I said earlier, but our agreement would still stay 3%, meaning if the village raised the hotel motel tax to 4% or 5%, we would collect the additional revenue. And only the 90% on the first 3% would go to the Aurora Convention Bureau. There's a difference in non-home rule and home rule. We've, we've had that conversation several times. Non-home rule communities have restrictions on what you can use the money for. Home rule communities can put it to general. They could put it in their operations fund and use it towards different things. But for non-home rule, you really have to put it back into promoting tourism and entertainment that leads to overnight stays. So by state law, literally, you know, they want overnight stays, hotel stays. So what we do is we take that 90%, we give it to the Aurora Area Convention Visitors Bureau. They advertise the entire area, all those towns, together and individually. And so their goal is to market a bigger area to bring people. So for instance, in case you're wondering, like, Batavia, I don't think has a hotel, but they're part of the group. So they might not be paying a fee at this point because they don't have a hotel motel tax. But the benefit is, they're in this group, which means two things. One, if Batavia has an event, people are still gonna look to stay close to Batavia. So Geneva's hotels and North Aurora's hotels are now the closest in proximity, so we benefit from that. The other benefit that Court was explaining to me earlier when we were talking was a large portion of this comes from the membership, but they also do get typically a big state funding grant from the Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity. A lot of times, that funding is based on proportion. So if you're part of a certified regional convention bureau, then you can apply for those funds. And then if you apply for those funds, the more revenue that those areas generate and the population matters, and how much the proportional share that the state will then allocate to that bureau to then put into the marketing of that area. So we benefit, like I said earlier, from being in that big area and having Aurora, for instance, in their population. And, oh, just got to, that was number four. Number three was the remaining 10%, just for record, it goes into our tourism budget. We use it for North Aurora Days and other things to try to bring people to the community, but basically all of it goes to North Aurora Days. The agreement overview is, there's a couple of small changes to what we are used to. Basically, they, in writing, they now have a 40% of all village contribution goes back to direct marketing. They've been doing that for years. It just wasn't necessarily part of the first IGA. So what that is, is they meet with us once a year. They'll sit down, they'll come with, up with an individual marketing plan for North Aurora. And they'll say, hey, we'd like to do some short videos of local businesses and then put those blurbs out there. We'd like to do direct advertising on these restaurants in town, or, you know, these places, like Slick City would be a good one because that's a regional draw now, considering no one else has one. So things like that, that would draw people into North Aurora. And then, of course, they do a lot in, in sporting events and things like that where people are looking to stay. The ongoing term, unlike five years, is just ongoing. So at any point, the village can terminate. We just have to give them notice on when we want to terminate, so we don't have to go through this process of renewing all the time. And then, we do have this current also. I just want to point it out that there are two representatives that are allowed from the village. Right now, we have one. Not every town has a second representative, so the first one is a municipal representative. Our current representative is our former mayor, Dale Berman, and our hotel representative is nobody right now. So some towns can. You can go to a local hotel manager or owner and ask them if they would like to also sit on there for your community. As, as far as that goes, I know Court could elaborate if you have any questions, but I think in talking with Dale recently, I think he's looking to potentially take an at-large position with the board. I think he's been one of the founding members going back all the way to 1987. And then what we would do is take, if that happens, then what we would do is take Mike Tof as an appointment of the board, as he's our business services manager. He actually deals with all the hotels now. He would be then brought to the board for possible appointment by the mayor. That's the, the plan, but I just wanted to give you an update. That's where we're at. So basically, we're looking to just keep an agreement with the convention bureau, bring it back to the board to just approve a new one that would be ongoing. If you have any questions, I can answer them, or Court.
So you continue on.
I would, I would just like to revisit getting rid of the tax to begin with. It, it's ultimately paid by the consumer, and it would make it a little bit more competitive in the area to not have this 3% tax. When you take a look at what the AACBB is doing, they're promoting businesses that many times have large marketing budgets on their own anyway. I really don't think it's something that we should be getting ourselves involved in. I'd rather eliminate the 3% tax overall. It's gonna make our businesses more competitive.
I don't know. I think we just continue on. I, I don't feel that that's stopping people from coming into our neighborhoods. I think the location of the hotels have more to do with what people come here for, and I think for the service that they provide, I think it's money well spent. That's my opinion.
Nobody's looking at the AACBB to pick a hotel. I mean, the way people shop for hotels now is different. It's all Travelocity. It's online. I, I really don't see a need for something like this to draw people to hotels. I mean, in our village, like
Not just hotels, it's restaurants, it's to a community.
I understand that. Most of our restaurants and businesses have direct marketing budgets and do things on their own as well. I, I don't think we should be taxing people.
It's not as large as the Aurora Convention Bureau does. They have a larger reach.
Steve, you just said
That's my opinion.
That we can take up to 5%, but we take three. So what do the surrounding municipalities charge in terms of taxes? Are they at three or?
Yes, most, if not all of them, are at three. There's one or two that are a little higher than three. Like Geneva just became a member, but theirs is five.
Okay.
But most of the communities are three.
Okay. I mean, my thought about it is, is you have this enormous, right, entertainment center coming here, right? The casino that's gonna be coming. I think it's due to open in 2026. And that's gonna be a big draw for this area. And my thought is to, to continue on. First of all, we can terminate it at any time, but I mean, I think it's, you know, I think we should continue on with it, especially when we have such a big destination coming up. I think that's gonna serve us well to be part of it.
To me, I think we are competitive. I mean, if most of the towns have this kind of tax, I mean, I don't think for 3%, even let's say, I don't know what Naperville has. Like, Court, can you answer that? Anything as far as like Naperville, or they have something different, but do they have similar tax, or?
I believe Naperville, six and a half or seven percent for their, their bet tax slogan.
Yeah. So I mean, they may not be part of this, but they have their own
Tax. Everybody does, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Shouldn't the question be, we should be asking is, why have a tax that we don't need to have? Again, this, we're looking at our residents and people who are having 40 or high inflation and rent and housing costs are through the roof. I mean, if we can scale back a tax.
It's not a tax on the residents.
Residents are not paying it. People who don't live here pay.
I think, I think you're confused that we're taxing. It's not, we're not taxing anybody. This is a tax for people who come in and spend time in a restaurant, or in the hotel.
Why do we need to tax on everything? A chance to scale back on a tax, then we should use it. This doesn't
Because the, the money is, at least I feel, the money that's spent from the tax promotes our village and all of our activities to bring people into our village and help our businesses. It was an investment into our community.
I'd like to see more metrics. Like, can you give us some information about engagement on your webpage and, and things like that to show that you guys actually do have a presence in the marketplace?
Well, certainly. I don't have it with me right now, but yeah, I can provide that to Steve. And we do, at the end of every year, we do provide Steve and his staff with a marketing report based on that 40% spend that we've done on behalf of the village, and that'll be coming out after the end of this calendar year. We'll, we'll put that report together, ensure that with Steve, we can share it with the full board as well. But we have lots of metrics that we do provide monthly to our board directors. We can make that available to the city, of the village board here as well.
I think you guys are more the experts than we would be if we take $90,000 and try to promote things in our town, let alone regionally or the neighbor towns. I mean, to me, it's pretty good value. And I think that you came on, you're tracking it differently. I think before, it's kind of harder to determine how the dollars were returned, but from the report I remember seeing last year, it seemed, you know, very valuable.
On average, it's gonna be like $3 a stay for most people. I don't think that's gonna deter someone from
Well, where are they gonna go? They're gonna spend 6%? I mean, that's the thing. It's and it's reinvested into our community in our area. I mean, that's the nice thing.
It's no worer.
Continue on.
Jay Harrell.
Mike?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, anything that's been around since 1987 and been working well, I don't see any reason not
With these other towns joining up, I mean, it's even better. Right? Item four, Steve. Code updates.
Okay. I don't know. It comes back on real quick. All right, I'm just gonna go and see if it pops back on. It's, it's thinking. So item number four is regarding vehicle and no parking code changes. And as you know, we've, we've been going back and forth quite a bit on trying to get our codes up to date. We have some codes that are extremely old, and we've, we've actually talked to the board, I think it's the third time, and a no parking change in the last few months. Seems like every time we tweak something, it actually raises an interesting question. So the first one I'm gonna go through So the first one I'm going to go through, currently it's not going to. Take that out. So the first one we're going to talk about tonight is overweight vehicles. There's, there's four different changes we're looking to do. And on the overweight vehicles, right now we have a listing. Uh, the board probably remembers about a year or two ago, we had this instance where we had semi trucks going through, um, some of the older areas of our town and they were getting lost on the way to the new warehouses because GPS was telling them that that was the quickest route. So we had to work with Google to fix that and, and basically reroute them to Airport Road. Uh, but long story short, that it raised an interesting question because we never formally banned overweight vehicles, large vehicles from streets, from residential roads. We only had it for a handful of roads. So, you know, there's a sign right outside our, uh, village hall that says no big trucks on, uh, Grant Street. But other than that, there was only like three or four others. And so then we, we fixed that issue by addressing the neighborhoods that were having the semi truck issue, thinking, oh, well, this is the only issue we're having semi trucks on. So we put in a list of about 10 to 12 different streets in there. And as we were talking more and more about our code changes, we realized that if someone, for instance, and we've had this before, brings a semi truck home or just a cab to park it on the street, there's no real code that talks about whether or not it can be on the street during certain hours, right? So we allow commercial vehicles on the road during the day to sit on a street. So in theory, someone could have parked the semi truck on, on a road if they're coming home for eight hours. Just left the semi truck in the middle of the road and our code would have nothing to do with that. So what we decided to do was we thought it'd be easier and less confusing for everybody and easier for the police department to enforce by simply getting rid of all of the, the listing of streets you, you can't drive a 10,000 pound vehicle on and simply listing the ones you can drive a 10,000 pound vehicle on. So, uh, short version is the list goes from, you know, let's call it dozens and dozens of streets in town. Now there's a list of maybe 15. And so now the, the, the police know if they're not on any of these 15 streets, they shouldn't be there. So I brought with me, uh, we had a draft ordinance that I was going to attach. It'll be on there for final approval, but just to show you, I'm going to give you a couple of names of the streets. So you, you know what streets are designated for trucks. So these are things that we would already have designated, like Airport Road by the warehouses, Alder, which is also by the warehouses, uh, Deer Path Road, Evergreen Drive, which is also by warehouses. Um, Grant Street would only allow trucks by Aurora Pack on the small portion that's public, but not on the portion that we already prohibit them from. So that was a little confusing. So the, the residents won't see a change, that'll still be banned. Um, Hanson Boulevard, Hart Road, Ice Cream Drive, Mooseheart, Mitchell Oak, Orchard Gateway, Orchard Road, Overland Drive, Poplar, Randall, Route 25, Route 31, one, uh, Route 56, Smoke Tree and Tanner Road. If you notice, most of the roads are state and county roads that already allow trucks. And the ones that are in the village, a lot of them are warehouses. So Oak Street's the one where it is, the reason Oak Street allows trucks is because it's actually built. It, it allows them now. It's built at a, at a higher designation. Um, and Brandon wasn't here to talk about this tonight, but, uh, he's applying for, uh, STP funding for, uh, Oak Street, uh, to repave all of Oak Street. And part of when you are a designated truck route or built to a truck standard, you do have the availability of grant funds for projects like that too. So, but Oak Street being through the entire town, it is the only real east-west thoroughfare to get people from point A to B. So that's the one change on overweight vehicles. No parking, this one is simple, real simple. We had the super confusing no parking list. And if you remember, we talked about the schools and, and changing all these, uh, areas, uh, pickup and drop off times. So what we, what we missed was when we updated the school no parking times for Fern Elementary, Hoxley Lane had existing no parking on one side of Hoxley, only between April and August, from 8:00 AM to 11:00 PM. It was on our list and it's for baseball, basically, because they're across the street from a park. Tons of people coming on the weekends, games can go late, they have lights at that field. So that's why those signs are there. But when we put the new school signs up, we realized that no parking on school day started at 7:30 in the morning during that same season where there would be an overlap where it says no parking on the other side at 8:00 AM. And we said, oh my God, this is going to confuse everybody. So we just decided to make all of Hoxley no parking 7:30 so that that's the same time, no matter if you're there for school or baseball, 7:30 AM, you can't park starting at 7:30 AM. So it was to make it clean, so we didn't have to put a whole bunch of confusing signs designate which season and which times. Uh, so that's the one change for no parking. Abandoned and inoperable vehicles. This has been a very difficult code to enforce for code enforcement for a long time. And our current definitions don't match. And so when you look at, they're in different sections. Uh, one's in the nuisance category of the code and the other one is in our vehicle section of the code. So the way the abandoned vehicle code was written currently, it almost makes it sound like when you're driving on 88 and you see a car left on the side of the road and someone, then two days later you drive on the same interstate, that same car is there. That's the way the definition kind of reads right now. It's if it's been abandoned on this, on a highway, you know, for a period of time. But then we got to thinking, there's nothing that actually says, what if it's abandoned on the street, like just a residential street? And someone just, you know, doesn't move the car. Well, there was this whole theory when I started here, everyone's like, yeah, chalk the tires, cars can't park on for 48 hours. But that's not what the code says. Cars, I don't think it would be reasonable if a homeowner parks a car in front of their own home that they would have to move a car with our current code, which has 24 hours. Cars should be, otherwise they're considered abandoned. I mean, you could park a car on a Friday night and not move it till Monday morning. It's in front of your own house. I don't know if that's abandoned, you probably just didn't go anywhere that weekend. So what we ended up doing was rewriting the abandoned vehicle section. And for code enforcement purposes, we actually wrote a better code for inoperable vehicle, which I think is what people in residential neighborhoods are, are worried about when they see a car that's sitting on a road or a driveway. So very quickly, the abandoned vehicle code will now read any motor vehicle, semi trailer, trailer, tractor, trailer, that does not have a current state registration or does not display a current state license plate with valid registration or a vehicle not removed within 10 hours of involvement of a, in a collision or a vehicle where the police department has attempted and not been able to make contact with the registered owner for a period of at least 48 hours. So what we decided to do was if someone does leave a car in the street and the neighbor's like, this car hasn't moved three days or four days. If it really looks like it might be abandoned, the police department can now start the 48 hour clock and simply reach out to the resident, find out, you know, they can look up the license plate, find out whose car it is and ask, hey, oh, you're on vacation, no problem. Don't worry about it, the car's fine. Or they could find out, oh, this person doesn't exist anymore, they left and the car's just abandoned. And now we have a 48 hour period act. Where inoperable comes in, it's a better definition now. It basically says the same definition and then, uh, for what a car is. But then it goes on to say, for a period of 48 hours, it has tires removed, one or more tires are flat, major vehicle parts have been removed, i.e. the windshield, engine, transmission, brake or body panel, or is otherwise incapable of being moved under its own power or unlawful to operate. So now when you have that vehicle that's got a flat tire in the street, it's not abandoned. After 48 hours, it's just an operable. So then we go, then that's where code enforcement can work with police and say to the homeowner, listen, you have to, you can leave your car legally parked there, but it has to be off the street if it's, if it's an operable. So either get it into your driveway and, or your garage and fix it, but you can't park it anywhere and, and leave it inoperable. It's got to be operable if it's on the street. So I think this is going to help our code enforcement officer a lot. It's going to help the police department out. I think it dispels the, the myth that we have a 24 hour or a 48 hour period for people having to move their cars on the roads. The last thing is new. E-bikes and e-scooters are becoming a, a real popular thing now in neighborhoods. And some towns are taking action and putting in the code. We figured since we're updating the code, we might as well take a look at it at the same time. Um, the state does have some laws and all we're looking to do is basically adopt the state rules. Um, so, and I'm going to go through a couple of those, just, uh, to give you an idea of what the state rules are. I mean, we're not the fun police, so we, we're not saying that people can't have them. And technically by state law, they have to follow these rules anyway. So we're just adopting them. Uh, but we have had some people reach out to us recently, uh, with concerns of, you know, people on scooters going, you know, down sidewalks and stuff like that.
They go pretty fast too.
So basically.
Kids scooters or?
Well, so they're not defined by age, they're going to be defined by, by motor. Yes. So just to give it a, an, a rough idea here, so a low speed electric bike, this is under, uh, bike, not scooter, can reach speeds with assistance of 20 miles per hour. And then they have ones that are, um, not able to get up to 20 and then they have ones that can go up to 28 miles per hour. And then for scooters, it's a device that weighs less than a hundred pounds, has a top speed of 10 miles per hour or less and is powered by electric motor or human power. And then basically what it says here is regulations under the regulation section, all e-bikes and scooters must comply with all equipment and manufacturing specifications and requirements. So if they require a helmet, they should have a helmet. Bikes, e-bikes are prohibited on village sidewalks. So, you know, we don't want 20 mile per hour bikes on sidewalks. E-scooters are permitted, which says that they're under 10 miles per hour. Class three e-bike riders must be, and those are the fast ones, must be at least 16 years old. All e-bike riders must follow all applicable, uh, traffic regulations. So if they're on the street, they still have to follow, they're on, they have a motorized system, they have to follow stop signs and everything. And e-bikes and scooters are permitted on bike paths otherwise posted. So Fox River Trail, we've all been there, you've seen people on e-bikes and scooters now racing up and down the trail. That's fine, the trails are wider, they're built with asphalt typically, they're made for that. So those are the changes that we have. Does anybody have any questions?
How about bikes that they put like a rotor on it, like almost like a weed whacker, like a a moped? I don't know, actually that's like an addition thing they can put on it and you hear it zipping by. These people travel like 30 miles an hour, ICM, different areas. He went through many neighborhoods. Then they would have to, they'd have to ride, ride on the street. But it's not electric though. Oh, it's like, what?
The pedals still move and their feet are still on the pedals, but there's a motor, that's what you're talking about. Yes.
They're both, bike, the bike, but it's not electric.
Yes, the bike and their, their feet are going, but they're not really the one powering it. Right.
According to what he just said, that, that particular bicycle would have to go on the street, not on the sidewalk.
So I think what you're saying, Mayor, is a class one electric bike is a.
It's not electric though, it's gas. That's what my only question is, that's, you're saying electric.
Why don't we say, uh, why don't we add or motorized?
Yeah.
To that ordinance.
Yeah.
Or just put motorized.
Mini bike or.
Say gas or electric.
Whatever to turn into. Sit down scooter versus the. It'd be a motorized bicycle. Yeah. They'd have to go on the street. But the scooter you're talking about, is it a scooter like with two wheels or is a scooter that?
Two wheels.
Like somebody would drive, you know?
No, I know what you're saying. Not a scooter as in like a mo.
Not a big man scooter.
Not a moped.
Yeah. But it's, yeah, it's, I'm just wondering. They go pretty fast though. Yeah.
I like the idea of, of looking at, um, we kept putting e-bike, e-scooter, I think motorized, because I mean, essentially whether it's gas or electric, they're probably classified the same.
It's got a motor, but yeah. Then I had a question about the, um, local deliveries. So like a semi, we're not providing local deliveries. So if they're cruising through.
Yeah, so they're still.
Drop off a semi.
Vehicles can still be on residential streets during localized delivery, they're servicing a home.
So if they'd get stopped, they'd just shut the show, they're going to that address. That's right.
But it gives us a reason to stop them, is to make sure that they're safely doing.
Right. And then was there something else that so many miles off the interstate or off a state route that trucks can travel anyway?
Yeah, I don't have it in front of me, but I thought there was a, uh,
Like a clog?
It used to be, I thought it was a mileage, but I, I think now it's just what they consider reasonable, that you're supposed to give, like if a business is close to a state highway, you have to give that business the right to get, uh, receive goods and everything from, um, a local highway. So, um, in, in some areas, basically you have to provide a reasonable route to get to those businesses. If it's a 30 minute pass through, because you can't use a residential street, then I think they would have an argument that there should be a road that allows them to be there. But that's why, if you look at the roads we have here, they're throughout the community. So they should be able to go east, west, north, south without actually having to go into a neighbor.
But if they are saying they're going to local delivery, then yeah, at least that's get some, I guess. But we don't want to use it a regular route like Cap'n by, uh, through the RCA to go to their warehouse off of, uh.
Sure, so if you see a giant tow truck in a neighborhood,
Yeah.
if it's not hooking up a car, obviously it's not servicing.
Yeah.
But to your point, emergency vehicles, buses, those are all exempt.
Semis drop off, out of somebody's house.
I have, uh, you know, uh, we briefly discussed, um, parking restrictions on some narrow streets where there's curves in that. And that's not a part of this, uh, presentation tonight. Are we going to ever get to, uh, looking at where it is dangerous to talk, park on both sides of the street and?
Yeah, we actually, um, Joe, do you want to talk about a little bit about what your officers did, um, as far as going around at night? And we didn't find a ton of areas, but there were a couple that had some overnight parking, but go ahead.
What we did, we, we reached out to the fire department to see if there were any issues that they had with vehicles parked on both sides and they didn't come back with anything. I know what you're talking about, like around the turns, like wing foot and.
You know, I've discussed it around that Columbia circle there, there's, it's actually dangerous. Uh, you can't see at all and, uh, people don't always go with the speed limit. So Robert Street, you address that. For Speed Street, I mean, that was one where, of course, couldn't get their trucks through the plow even, right?
Right.
But I understand, trustee, you're, you're saying mostly it's, um, the situation you're describing, isn't that a, a car couldn't make it through with cars parked on both sides? It's that only one car can make it through.
Right. And the, and the visibility is zero. So you can't see anything that's coming when they're parked, uh, on those curbs in both sides.
I mean, we can, I, I know, uh, the neighborhood that you had raised earlier in that area. Um, so I know exactly which curve you're talking about. I think another trustee raised one, um, in the area of by Fern Elementary. So, but once again, with our new parking regulations, some of that hopefully has been taken care of. Uh, but as far as, you know, it's funny, because when Joe and I were asking about it, the reason we had the cops do it at night was obviously because that's when we assume most people are going to be home, is that they're going to be parking overnight and see what, what cars are actually on the street. The neighborhoods that we would assume had cars on the street are the ones that you still, I mean, they've been there for, as long as I've been here, there are some neighborhoods that have cars parked on both sides of the street for sure. Um, but the big issue is can you get a car through?
You know, I'm, I'm not really talking about, like on my street that's kind of straight, but at the end of it, both residents park their cars, you know, continually on both sides of the street. It makes like a little gate to get through, but the visibility is okay. What I'm talking about is like that curb that we're, we know about on, actually it's on Wingfoot.
Wingfoot, where from Columbia, where it makes the curb.
They have parties and there, cars will line up on both sides of the street. And that's kind of, uh, what I'm, and that not just on rare occasions, it happens fairly often. So I'm just wondering if we could like somehow restrict maybe parking on one side of the street, uh, at least around those curbs or?
We can bring it back to the, a board meeting and just doing like a, um, you know, no parking from here to corner kind of thing. So what you're doing, uh, the mayor alluded to Roberts, which was extremely tight, that road. Like it was the, a sharp turn and it was hard to see like if you had cars parked in both ways. So what that does is it at least frees up one side of the, the road to be able to see that traffic coming.
Right.
Right. We could take a look at that.
For the, uh, for the overweight vehicle change, is there any concern that's going to confuse truckers?
It shouldn't. I mean, most truckers know that they're not allowed to, typically not allowed to ru- drive through residential areas unless they're delivering or providing a service. And basically they're already written that way. We just had all the list of the streets that they weren't allowed to be on. So to change that, we just put here the streets you're allowed to be on, so it's not as confusing.
Yeah, is, do they know, like is there, other than signage, is there, do these truckers that are not from the area know like where, where the truck routes actually are?
Well, they usually ask for a permit and then that route will be on the permit.
Okay. Yeah, because the only reason I'm, if I'm wondering is I, you know, I, I have a CDL, I drive a overweight truck every day for work. And, you know, we're driving through Aurora and such, the only thing I'm really ever looking for is the no trucks, you know, signs, not, oh, trucks are allowed this way. You know, so I just wondered if there's any concern with confusion, so.
We really don't see a ton of, uh, commercial vehicles go down, um, residential areas, except like we talked about off of John Street, where Google was giving wrong information, saying instead of going down Airport Road, go to John Street to hit the new warehouses. And that's usually what we deal with.
We could probably change the code too. Um, we put village vehicles are exempt. Well, we can change that to municipal so that there's no confusion.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm thinking of just general truckers, you know, are they going to be looking for trucks can go this way versus, hey, I can't go that way type.
I mean, there's definitely designated routes and. I mean, there's definitely designated routes and. For, for truckers and, and Brandon, if you want to jump in, but sometimes like roads, uh. I dot will actually have a listing of, of state designated truck routes, I believe. And there's like a type one, a type two.
Yeah, you can designate it where it gets posted onto the Getting Around Illinois website that Ida has. So, I mean, we could look into getting our streets all added to that.
Could even have like a highlighted map on that same listing.
As a practical matter.
Yeah, I don't think it's going to be a huge deal. I'm just, just because I drive a truck daily and. I'm never looking for a trucks. Yes, this way it's more of, oh, I can't go that way type thing.
Yeah, as a practical matter, that kind of testimony in front of a judge is going to, uh, be a challenge. To getting a ticket to stick. If there's not a sign on a street. Oh, it's funny you say that because I was just going to bring up that the one channel will be where you sign it. So in our ordinance, we say. Reasonably signed. So I've seen it in communities where they do it at the welcome signs. Not saying that that's the best idea, but I'm saying sometimes you'll see watering restrictions posted at the outer edges of the community when you get in there. Sometimes they'll go and put it in subdivisions. So they'll put it at the entrance of all the major subdivision entries, you know.
That's where I usually see them.
Yeah, I can't imagine that we were going to go put a sign on every single street, but I think if we post them at at least the subdivision sign, like areas of major.
Yeah, I, I think that would be. A reasonable response. And I, and I think those tickets probably would stick because you have to enter the subdivision somewhere. And if there's a sign there, then that's probably sufficient.
But the trustee edge, I just, I think where it gets confusing is when you start to post those signs. You're, you're trying to do it to adhere to the law, but what you're actually doing is telling that truck driver who is legally making a delivery to somebody's house. I'm not supposed to be here. It's telling me I'm not supposed to be here. Now what do I do? Because you're actually seeing a sign saying, don't come on my street, because they're not going to read the exemptions underneath the sign.
Well, what about just, I've seen signs saying, no through trucks. Just, wouldn't that be?
Well, I guess, I guess, so Kevin, to your point, like right now. If there's a semi driving through any subdivision, that's not allowed. There's no signs posted now. So are those contested tickets not being? You know what I mean? I'm not, I'm not saying I want to post no.
Yeah.
Truck signs all over town because they.
They get a lot of signs.
They, they, they do get contested because the fines are heavy.
Mm-hmm.
And they have corporate lawyers who will travel around the country to local rooms to defend these guys. So, yeah, they, they get defended pretty, pretty heavily.
Well, and look at Joe.
I'm not terribly concerned about it, not to raise. I've just, I was just thinking it's kind of like a reverse psychology for people that do this every day.
It's probably not likely, for instance, that people would be driving into a subdivision typically like Windstone or Timber Oaks or.
I'm, yeah.
Isn't that much of a problem?
It's not, but I mean.
I don't think we'd want signs in front of our subdivision. Don't do this, don't do that, don't do this, don't water, don't drive a truck, don't.
If you go to court, the judge usually says the onus is on the driver, you know, the rules of the road that of the.
I mean, if you're a semi driver, you don't want to go through Timber Oaks. You'd rather go down Oak Street. But I mean, if the guy makes a wrong, errant turn. I mean, I wouldn't even see that, but they're probably delivering something. I mean, I think what we're trying to eliminate is like the ours, the thing over on John Street. And willow where these trucks are trying to get to where they're going to go, but they were just driving through the subdivision.
Well, and the funny thing about this.
Hot spot, right?
Yeah.
Grant is one that I would rather leave the sign, truck sign there, you know, like on a place like Grant.
No, that's, that's legitimate. We just, and, and two things I was going to say is one is Joe and his team that have been doing more truck enforcement. They're, they're basically sticking to the places that we know trucks exist. Like, we're not going into neighborhoods looking for random trucks. Like they did one recently on Grant Street. They did one recently on Route thirty one. So. We know that we've got complaints of trucks sneaking through Grant Street. We actually ticketed some. And we did the same thing on thirty one recently with the state.
That's on the way, right? On Grant Street. Thirty one's a little different, right? State route.
Yeah, that's still overweight, but overweight, overweight for even a state route.
Yeah.
So you're right, but still, you're right. Truck enforcement, as I was getting at, we're not going down into like neighborhoods looking for trucks. Right. But what the unintended, for us internally was intended. One of the things that does fall through the cracks is we have this really, in my opinion, good commercial vehicle definition now. We know exactly when they can be in a neighborhood. We know exactly if they can be on someone's property or on the street. The problem was is our code allows them to basically park a semi on our street. And we were talking about that where we actually had a house that had a, a completely overweight vehicle that was bringing it home. And we're taking it for driveway. But all that person had to do is move it to the street and we would have no enforcement of that. Actually, the irony in that one, and since. The house is actually on a street that we had listed as no overweight vehicles, but that could have happened in another area of town. And there would have been no recourse during, you know, an eight hour period of the day. So it was interesting because it brought up a conundrum. We don't want semis on, on, on trucks like that on streets. So. Why don't we make that more clear? Yes.
Sounds good. Last thing.
Okay, I don't remember. On the agenda tonight is regarding next year's, uh, upcoming property tax levy. What we did was the board had an initial conversation, uh, last meeting about setting the levy for the next year. And the board had some questions going back and forth. The CPI was three point four percent. So one of the first questions that always comes up is, you know, why did staff ask for three point four percent? So what Jason and I went back from was basically it's a board decision every year on what the levy should be. So what we're doing tonight is, and we're, we're looking to use this kind of model going forward pretty much every year when we talk about the levy. To kind of go to the board and say, we, we start typically with a CPI request because of this. But we want the board to say if you agree with that, and if you don't, just simply tell us what you think it should be and we'll adjust to it. So rather than us coming and offering zero every year or three point four, it's really the board that's setting that levy. So we just want to give you all the educated, uh, you know, facts that we have that we deal with. Then we go from there. So the big issue always comes up and, and Jason's going to hit it on, on like the second slide. It's home rule versus non-home rule that makes the difference and that drives the decision internally. And why we, we typically start with the CPI request.
All right, thank you. So as Steve mentioned, we just want to give some more information, um, about, about the tax levy and kind of what we're looking at. Um, the tax levy is a general fund's third largest revenue source behind sales tax and income tax. So it's a major revenue for us. Um, and some upcoming dates, um, uh, depending on what we decide tonight for the levy, we're going to notice it in the, in the newspaper, um, come this Friday. For our truth and taxation hearing and then come back December second to have the actual hearing and then our, uh, special service area public hearings. And then approve the actual tax levies that night. Um, so Steve mentioned home rule versus non-home rule. With the village being a, a non-home rule community, the property taxes is much, we're much more reliant on property tax just because we don't have. Um, from, first of all, we're capped each year by CPI and new construction. Whereas a home rule community could take a zero percent for three, four years straight and also decide that, hey, we need more money. We're going to increase the tax levy significantly in one year. Um, and additionally, home rule communities have many more revenue sources that they can look at rather than property taxes. So we're capped, our home rule is not capped. Um, they have additional items like local sales tax where we went out for our referendum. We could go up to one percent for our non-home rule sales tax. Uh, not home rule community could add on an, an additional home rule sales tax at any rate that they wanted to. So if they want to say, you know what, we're going to take zeros on our property tax for the next five years, but we're going to add on a quarter percent or half percent more. And we can go up to two percent more on our, on our, uh, sales tax. They could get their revenue that way. Um, plus they have also additional little smaller revenues that they could do, like a gas use tax. So every time you go buy gas at the grocery, at your gas station, there could be another. Two cent, three cent, four cent, uh, per gallon on there that a home rule can do. Um, the ho- the hotel tax, whereas we can use it for to- tourism. The home rule community can use it for any public purpose. It could just be a general fund revenue that they use just to kind of go forward with their general fund. Um, they could take an alcohol tax or they could take a real estate transfer tax. So they have a lot more available to them to raise money. Where we're pretty limited to what we can do and we're capped on our property tax and we're more reliant on that. Um, one thing we went to show was just kind of a historical levy illustration about, you know, when we asked about. Do we have to take a levy increase for this current year? Can we afford it? Can we put the budget together by taking a zero? A lot of times the answer is yes, that we, for this current year and just looking very short sighted, we can do that. But one thing I wanted to kind of show was what the effect of that has for later. Um, so I put this graph together here with this. Um, this blue bar that you see coming down the lot, the bottom here is the actual tax levies back from twenty fourteen levy to now. Um, so for those, the village took no CPI in twenty eighteen and twenty twenty two. And then two and a half percent out of the possible five and twenty three. And then each year we took new construction. And then what we did is we went back and looked at it with this yellow bar up top saying. Every single year, if we were to take the maximum possible amount available to us, what would the tax levy have been? Kind of show that here. So this green gap right here is basically the amount of money that compounded every year that we kind of have lost off the levy. And for those years from twenty eighteen to twenty twenty three, that's six hundred eighty five thousand dollars over those years less, um, that we didn't capture as part of our levy. For that, um, then looking into this current year levy with the three point four percent. Um, CPI increase, that grows up to nine hundred sixty seven thousand dollars. So it's really just that effect of. Not taking an increase in one year will compound years down the road and, and leave money that we don't have available to us that we can't make up in other formats. So what is our property tax used for? Um, property taxes represent sixteen point seven percent of our general fund budgeted revenues. The twenty three property tax levy is two point eight million dollars. Just over one point eight million dollars or sixty five percent of that was used going straight to our police pension contributions. Um, just a reminder, we have to be ninety percent funded, uh, state minimum by twenty forty. Currently we're sixty one point nine percent. So every year we get to that twenty forty, we're going to see that increase, that amount that we're putting into our pensions go up every year. We're over one point nine million. I see another hundred and thirty thousand dollar increase for this next year. And then similarly, what are tax levy allocations that go to? Back in twenty fourteen, our general fund levy accounted for sixty two percent. Of the total levy. Police pension was only twenty seven percent. So that was five hundred eighty nine thousand dollars. Fast forward to this twenty three levy, this most recent one that was approved. That's kind of flipped where twenty four percent of it went to our general fund, sixty five percent of it went towards police pension. So it's gone from five hundred eighty nine thousand to just over one point eight million. Um, and as I mentioned, in twenty four, recommended contribution is one million nine hundred fifty five thousand. So it's going to, it's going up each year as we. As we approach that twenty forty, so the, that police pension levy is going to keep taking a bigger portion of just the property taxes that come in. And leave less for just general operations. Um, one thing that also additionally that we, we kind of use this leftover extra money, um, that you'll know in previous years is for our capital funding. So if you look in that little table I put to the right there, our capital projects fund base revenue. So that's basically our non-home rule sales tax. Our electricity tax and our natural gas tax makes up about three point four million dollars. Now with the public works facility debt we just, um, took on. One point two four million dollars will go towards that debt each year. And then our annual road program, we, program, we target about one point eight million dollars. That leaves over about three hundred and sixty thousand dollars each year in our capital fund of just one off things that come up, special projects, emergency fixes. Um, if projects go over budget, we have a little, just a little bit of room. Um, usually what we've done to make that up is those general fund capital transfers, which I'll touch on in the next slide here. But historically, we've tried to save six hundred thousand dollars or so each year from the general fund. Gets pushed over capital, um, to help us for capital funding and really make sure our capital fund stays strong. Um, this current budget, we had to lower that to four hundred thousand dollars for our capital, um, transfer. So it's really just an amount we put together when we kind of put the budget together to see if there's anything left over that we can push over there. Now of those capital projects funds, we've, over the last six years, we've pushed over twelve million, six hundred eighty thousand dollars. From general fund because of surplus revenues over to the capital projects funds. And what we've used that money for was the Tanner Remington storm sewer of two point eight million. And we were able to pay, pay off the police debt of two point seven million dollars early, which saved us, uh, interest on that. Um, we're able to pay the, uh, police facility or the public works facility design and construction management, one point three million dollars. Um, didn't have to borrow money for that. We're paying that straight out of money on hand in the capital projects fund. Plus we were able to put down four point five million dollars of cash and not borrow that, add that to the debt on, on the, um, the public works facility. And by using that partial, that partial funding of the capital projects or the public works facility, not borrowing the full amount. We were able to take basically about an eighteen point five million dollar debt over twenty years and push it down to a thirteen point seven million dollars or fifteen years. So save us about three point eight million dollars of interest over that time by using some of that money on hand that we were able to use from the capital transfers. Um, sales tax is a huge part of our revenue. It's our largest revenue source in the general fund. Um, we've seen that go from four point three million dollars in fiscal year fourteen, fifteen to seven point two million on this most recent fiscal year. Um. There's a few reasons for that. Um, the can, the three percent cannabis tax went in twenty twenty one. That increased, that increased revenues significantly. Plus that post pandemic auto sales and price increases, we see things costing more, which. And correlated to the sales tax you pay on it. We actually did see sales tax decrease a little bit, one hundred ninety six thousand or two point seven percent. This most recent fiscal year. Um, and then the cannabis tax that we, when we got it, it was significant money. But basically on a monthly basis, we've kind of seen it go down each and every month as more dispensaries open up just nearby that. It's becoming less and less of a, a major revenue for us. But related to the sales tax, um, there's some economic development impacts on that. The, the village has four active sales tax, uh, agreements. That's North Shore Town Center, the, all the inline stores, basically nothing. Everything in between Target and JCPenney. We have Gerald Ford, Gerald Genesis, and then the new Riverfront Ram. So if all those rebates were projecting that four hundred and forty nine thousand five hundred in this upcoming budget year, or six percent of the sales tax coming in. We're going to end up rebating back out to basically the, the businesses, the developers. Um, there may be future, uh, incentives needed to help drive economic dev- development within town. Um. Yet these incentives, they provide the potential for future sales tax, but we kind of take a hit upfront when basically we're writing a check for any of the money, the sales tax money we're getting. We're giving it right back in to basically incentivize, um, these developers to come to town if we're facing, you know, some stiff competition from local municipalities to get. Their, uh, the businesses go to them. So as far as the actual tax rate and tax levy, um, we just wanted to kind of break down what those, those things mean. The tax rate is what gets applied to each property's assessed value. Um, the property tax levy is essentially the amount that the village asks for. So the tax rate is broken down by, we take the, the tax levy and then the whole district EAV. Um, and I've got a couple graphs on the side to kind of show that. This first one is the EAV. So as you can see in twenty fifteen to twenty twenty four. We've had a very steady increase in EAV in the value, uh, within the community. And then how you see that correlates down below is this, this orange bars here. So every year we're asking for more money, but since that EAV is going up significantly every year, this gray bar here, that's our tax rate. But even though we're asking for mon- for more money every year, our tax rate's going significantly down just because the value in the town is, is going up significantly. And I wanted to give just a little example down here of just essentially a sample tax bill this past tax year of a three hundred thousand dollar house. What it gets assessed at. So, you know, your average three hundred thousand dollar house would pay three hundred sixty six dollars or three hundred sixty seven dollars to the village. A total tax bill, seven, seventy six hundred. So, you know, that, that kind of house, that's four point eight percent of the tax bill would come to the village on that. Um, so now what I wanted to do is kind of illustrate, you know, what the impact of this current year tax bill on that same house. So assuming a three point four percent increase in new construction, that was at our levy increase at, our levy at two million nine forty four or five hundred. Um, so that would actually decrease our tax rate based on our preliminary EAV numbers, nine percent for the year. So if you took that same three hundred thousand dollar house and you just said, you know, not knowing kind of what the assessed value. But if that three hundred thousand dollar house now went up five percent, seven percent, ten or twelve and a half percent. You know, became a three fifteen up to three hundred and thirty seven thousand dollar house. Um, we're just giving illustrations as to how much tax that same house would pay versus what it paid last year. You know, so even if. We increased our levy, the most we could possibly do this year, say your house went up ten percent, your three hundred thousand dollar house became a three hundred and thirty thousand dollar house this year. You pay about three dollars more to the village on, on the village portion, um, as- assuming we took the full levy amount. So now what we wanted to do is just kind of lay out various options for the village, you know, and. Kind of what we started with is just hearing the, some of the things we heard from last time. We just said, okay, how about, here's what a zero percent CPI, no CPI, but we take the new construction. Because our past practice, you know, even going back through all the years was, we take the new construction exemption, but then maybe the CPI is, some years we took it, some years we didn't. We took a portion of it. And we just kind of threw out some numbers here. I think two point five was what we did last year. So we had the option to do five. But we cut it in half, so two point five. The three point four is the maximum amount. So that would be that, that two million nine forty four, five hundred. Or five point one levy increase. But we wanted to just now get feedback, you're kind of going through what we did, um, as to what. You know, appropriate levy amount would be. And this would be the amount that, that we had noticed the newspapers that have the public hearing, uh, first meeting in December on.
My opinion's the same as I'd say it's been for three and a half years, zero percent with new construction.
How much do we need to revenue? I, I mean, how, how necessary it is, is it to increase it or?
Yeah, yeah, like I said. If we're talking about just looking at this most recent budget year, this upcoming budget year, I mean, we could definitely put together a budget with a zero percent. I, I don't think it's, it's a matter of need. I think it's more like, like the slide I showed previously, it's a matter of kind of. Whatever you don't take this year, you don't get back. whatever you don't take this year, you don't get back next year. We're kind of limited as to if we ever need revenue again. We can't just make up a tax or make up a fee and just say, you know, we came up a hundred thousand dollars short. Let's add this fee onto there. So it's just more of like a, kind of not, not letting it pass by or being mindful of what you decided, what you decided today will affect you five years from now.
Yeah, yeah. That's a long range of impact is what you're concerned about. I'd be willing to go with the two and a half again this year, like we did last year.
Uh, me too. I'm with Mike.
Yeah. Two and a half or three point four, it's really not going to be a huge difference to really anybody. Every homeowner is still going to see a decrease. So they're going to be happy about that.
We'll go along with the two point five, although I would go for the three point four, because I just feel like the, the pension contribution, right, is significant. We have, um, less, much less according to how I heard it, um, from the cannabis dispensary, because now there's on every corner. Uh, if consensus is two point five, I would go for that. I would not vote for less. I think we should take the three point four, because, um, we don't want to find ourselves, you showed that chart before, with all of what we could have taken and we don't have. And, and that's fine. In those years, we took nothing and the other year took two point five, but I think it's just short sighted not to take it. But if two point five is consensus, I'll go with that.
Anybody else? Laura?
I, I think you all know my position is we should, it's not our money. We should be as conservative as we can. Um, I don't think zero would be a good move right now, just not knowing what's going on with the economy. But just keep in mind that the EAVs are anticipated to go through the roof, because we've seen twenty percent increases year over year in home values for the past four years. So I, I'd like to be as conservative as possible, because that two and a half percent is going to be off the new adjusted EAV, which is going to be sticker shock for a lot of people. So I, I, I would not go higher than the two and a half. I would even make an argument for a one and a half or a two. But, um, either, either way, I mean, we're going to see an increase in revenue.
Okay. So we have four, uh, two point five. Anything else? Questions? That's it. All right. That ends our discussion. Motion adjourn for the evening.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
All's the same. All right. Good night.